Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting to order, and we'll begin with an invocation from Pastor Cooper.
Goodbye, your head for me, let's pray. Grace of Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you. Goodbye, thank you for grace and mercy. Slaying, give us relief from the drought, Lord. Father, I pray, Lord, as you meet together tonight, or you're sure is here with us, you're guiding our conversation. Father, let us have a meaningful dialogue, let us listen to our citizens as well, and Father, show this team how to serve. Father, I thank you for our mayor who's not here, for our commissioners that were here and not here, Lord, keep blessing their families. For the town people, Lord, and especially when I lift up MNT tonight, Lord, and her family, Lord, I pray that they'll be healing there, Lord. Father, most of all, I pray to bring comfort and encouragement to them, for the faith of our hearts, praise in my prayer. Amen.
Amen. All right, next up, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and properly second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Do I vote? Not. Do I vote here?
Yes.
Okay, aye. All right, motion passes. All right, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so next up is citizens' comments. Deputy clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comments today?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mason, Rizzo.
He's.
He's here.
There.
Yep. All right.
I just have a quick statement, guys. Board, Mr. Mayor who's not here, Mayor for town, administration, it's a pleasure to spend a moment with you, and I want to thank everyone here for your continued hard work and dedication to the town of Youngsville. You know, the last time I saw the mayor, one of the last times that he and I spoke, I just spent it by car. I was crossing Main Street in the mid-block crosswalk on the east side of downtown, just before across the main intersection, and a guy hit me with his car. Short summary, I spent a night in the ER, multiple rounds of physical therapy, and surgery to remove bone shards from a busted elbow. I mean, obviously, this is disappointing, and, you know, Youngsville has a perfectly conundrum ahead of them as we attempt to decouple Ninety-six and Main Street and make the town more pedestrian-friendly. You know, to the board, Mayor Flowers, you know, the community is counting on you guys to continue putting forward the very necessary efforts as outlined by the Frankie Times piece that was published on the board. You know, while Main Street efforts are laudable, you know, the communities just off of Main Street are suffering mightily from the traffic swells that flood the residential neighborhood streets designed, as we think of it, as streets for the neighborhood. You know, motorists have developed an alarming and dangerous habit of using Carl Street and Winston Street as cutarounds to Ninety-six, as should be evident by the volume of violations committed at or near the four-way stop at Franklin Street and Carl Street, thanks to the Youngsville PD for all the effort that they put in. I'd like to personally thank Nathan Page on record for his dedication to the town of Youngsville, his thoughtful and measured approach to problem-solving, coupled with his vision for a safe and inviting community deserves the highest recognition. I cannot thank you enough, Mr. Page, for what you do for us. Over the next few months, I will be providing evidence of the community and its position. I personally have hundreds of pictures and video of heavy trucks and trailers on Franklin Street and Carl Street, as I'm joined by my neighbors and friends here. I will also have testimonials to the danger the constituency faces, even across the streets in our neighborhood. And I will also be presenting solutions and success criteria on how to work together to calm the traffic. I know I'm against time. The high volumes of vehicles, particularly the commercial vehicles squeezing on our streets, is not just frightening but unnecessary, and it brings an unnecessary hazard to our residents, which range from retirees to toddlers. I'm only challenging the administration and the board and the office of the mayor to put effort protecting not just Main Street, but the adjacent streets as well. I think we need actionable outcomes on these streets. I think we need chicane's, we need curb-in gutters, we need curb extensions, we need manageable deterrents that will help us stay, 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 stay safe while not violating the town's position on speed bumps and other things that might damage the further-farer vehicles. As you continue your fantastic efforts to protect Main Street and resolve Main Street to be pedestrian-friendly, I'm begging you. The community needs to feel safe on Winston Street, on Franklin Street, on Carl Street, on all of our streets. And I want to be a force for good and help you guys work together and be a community voice, as someone who's experienced. It's probably one of the worst things that we could expect in the town. That's it for me, so thanks.
Mr. Rizzo, I appreciate it, and first off, I want to say I'm really sorry that this happened to you. I remember hearing that an incident occurred, but I had no idea until I read your email this morning on how severe it was. So, yeah, I'm very sorry for that, and I will say that, that, you know, I'm speaking for myself, and I can say for most of the board that we are one hundred percent aligned with what you're saying. That's the vision we have for downtown, is to make it safe, walkable. I want to be able to walk down there, across the street. I know how it is, I know Commissioner Percy has had incidents down there as well. And I'm sure that Nathan will inform you on all the things that we're trying to do, some long-term, some medium-term, and it's, it's good to have the community come out and bring ideas to us and show us that support. I mean, some of the things you've provided us, we've used when we've talked to DFC about trying to get the trucks off, like, everything that you can provide us, and I'm looking forward to seeing the evidence that you have, would just be more ammunition for us to use to help get some of those short-term goals of getting trucks off town. I know that's not going to fix everything. I'm hopeful that, you know, just alleviating traffic in general will make things better on the side streets. Trust me, we hear from Commissioner Johnson all the time, he lives one road over to, so I know what goes on. I don't live it as close as you do, but I understand it, and I appreciate you coming in and talking, and look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you.
Same, sir.
Thanks, I really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Was that all that signed up?
Yes, it was.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak for citizens' comment?
Jim.
Yes, sir.
Jason Brilla.
Slightly late, Mr. Johnson here, to hear your comments again, sometimes, and maybe it's on our street.
Yeah.
My knowledge, this board is in concurrence with Commissioner Ray, I cannot say this something without some of our county leadership. I need to share with some of them. They're nice. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Jim. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right. Next up, we have consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion made, properly second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, old business, we have the Franklin County, Franklinton, and Youngsville interlocal agreement. We're going to pass this over to Nathan to provide us an update.
This is Commissioner Brad. The town of Youngsville is working with the town of Franklinton and the county of Franklin to address some intergovernmental issues that have cropped up. The attached interlocal agreement will address the authority for building inspections, fire inspections, and animal controls. While these activities are already taking place, this agreement formalizes the authority for the county to collect these for these services. The agreement will also require Franklin County not to allocate utilities for parcels within the zoning jurisdiction of the town without a petition of annexation in hand. The agreement also changed the makeup of the utility allocation committee to include a representative from Youngsville and another from Franklinton. Lastly, this interlocal grants authority for the town to bump out the extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ to the one-mile limit authorized under one sixty D two zero two. I've been in communication with some of the Franklin County Commissioners today, and they have given us a date and a time to meet. They requested that we meet with them as less than a quorum on July twenty-third from two to three thirty. My recommendation is that Mayor Flowers attend that, and then another representative, and Commissioner Ray, I'm right, I anticipate you being out of town that day. So if there was another representative that we wanted to approve, so that we would make a motion to approve Mayor Flowers and one of the other Commissioners to attend that on behalf of the town of Youngsville.
Okay. All right.
That is my week I'm out of town to, that's my vacation week, sir.
I'm available. I could.
Do it.
Okay.
If you could sing, move along with the county on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the initial requested action here was to approve the interlocal as presented, but given that we have a meeting scheduled to discuss it, I'll entertain a motion to continue this resolution and to August, and to appoint Mayor Flowers and Commissioner Percy to attend the meeting on July twenty-third to discuss the interlocal agreement.
That was a lot.
Yes.
Let's make a motion to do all this.
All right.
All right, motion made, properly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes.
Well, thank you.
All right, new business, item A, resolution staggering the terms of the Youngsville ABC Board by extending Chair Mason Hertz's term by one year. Term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, and I'll pass this over to Nathan.
Commissioner Brad, I'm happy to go into whatever level of detail you'd like, but this is exactly the same thing as we did with Mayor Flowers earlier, where there were too many people coming off the board at the same time, and this staggers the terms more even.
Right.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion's been paid and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. B and C here, the presentation of annexation petition, Holden Road Towns, two thousand and twenty-four dash one, and then these are tied together here, the resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, Holden Road Towns, two thousand and twenty-four dash one. And again, I'll pass it over to Mason.
Yes, Commissioner Brad, this is a petition requesting annexation that the clerk should investigate, and the clerk has to determine that the folks who have signed the document actually own the parcel and have the authority to do so. In this case, the parcel recently changed hands, we have the new owner of it who has signed the petition for annexation.
All right. Any questions for Nathan on that? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Thanks.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. The next two are grouped together to presentation of certificate of sufficiency for annexation, Holden Road Towns, two thousand and twenty-four dash one, and a resolution fixing date of public hearing on annexation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, Holden Road Towns, two thousand and twenty-four dash one, and again, I'll pass it over to Nathan.
Yes, Commissioner Brad, this one is, sorry, Clerk Curry and I both checked the ownership, and it is valid, and the certificate of sufficiency is in your packet, but this one will actually reset the date of the public hearing for our next meeting in August. And just to refresh the board, this is the fourteen point two acres that were rezoned to residential Main Street transition at our December fourteenth meeting of two thousand and twenty-three, and we understood at the time that the property developer will include, amongst the other requirements of our ordinance, a pedestrian path on the north side of Holden Road in that area.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution setting public hearing for August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made properly second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, item F, tax collector's settlement report, I'll pass that over to Deputy Clerk, Robbie.
Hey, the tax collector settlement report, the first report within the packet is the preliminary settlement report. This includes a list of persons still owing real and personally personal property tax for two thousand and twenty-three. The second report in the packet is the settlement for current taxes for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four that includes all charges, billing, interest, penalties, et cetera, and credits, payments, releases, passing taxes to the tax collector. The third report is a settlement for delinquent taxes for tax year twenty twenty, for two thousand and tw- two thousand and four through two thousand and twenty-two. This also includes charges and credits to the tax collector for all the delinquent accounts from previous years. There is an attached list of all delinquent personal property taxes that have been due for over five years and that are owed by deceased taxpayers, businesses that are no longer active, and et cetera. There is a resolution approving the settlement with the tax collector for these insolvents that will need to be adopted, and the final action is the order of collection, which is collecting the taxes for the two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Robbie. Any questions for Rob? All right, first action requested is to adopt resolution approving the settlement with the tax collectors, with the tax collector for insolvents. We'll have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded, and any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Second action requested is approve order of collection.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the order of collection.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, reports and other businesses, Mayor Flowers is not here, but I'll, I'll start for Commissioners. The block party that we had, I forget, June twenty-seventh, the dates, whatever Saturday it was.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, there you go.
I'll tell you the calendar.
It was a great day of events, there was an event started at noon, I think, at Burnt Barrel. We had the grand opening at the Nail Cove downtown, which is the pink nail salon downstairs, downtown. Myself, Commissioner Percy, and Mayor Flowers were there for that. They're doing great, they're doing so good that they're afraid to take calls because they can't get people in for months now, so. Yeah. Some of us, some of us. So it's a great ribbon-cutting event, it's very hot, so we only stood outside for a short time, and then, of course, the, the block party down downtown went very well. We have our Summer Fest coming up, July twenty-seventh, that's why I get mixed up. Another great event, I was glad to see the signs downtown, I think that'll get the attention of a lot of folks who may not be on social media. We are promoting on social media, looking forward to that, I had a couple of friends who were putting in vendor booths and food trucks and things like that, so looking forward to that. I already mentioned the Nail Cove opening up, we also had a new record store go in yesterday, and, no, sorry, Tuesday, that just opened up, and so I just found out about that, so I'm really excited, I've already messaged the owner. We have similar tastes in music, so I'm looking to meet him, yeah.
I know what you like.
Yeah. There is no campa meeting for July, that's kind of status quo, we always skip the July meeting unless there's something pressing. That's all I have. Commissioner Brad?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed all that whole Saturday. Sounds like it was awesome. I am excited about the Sesquicentennial meeting tomorrow morning, for those of you who don't know, I think every, a lot of you are on the committee, so, yeah. The chance for nine hundred and fifty next year, we're doing all kinds of fun things, and so a lot of these festivals and other things we'll be planning, part of that, that's great. That's really, I've really nothing exciting to say, still very talky because I was at work all day and talked to everybody today, so we'll be fine now. For tomorrow? Just kidding, we don't have a meeting tomorrow, it's been canceled. Don't anybody come.
Yeah. All right.
Chamber of Commerce meeting for both Franklin Greater and the First Friday event were canceled this year, or this month, obviously. Chambers meeting was July fourth, and then the First Friday meet and greet with your elected officials was July fifth, but it just didn't really work out for the weekend. The RAP Group, which is a group of young business owners, are may still currently be at Burnt Barrel. I stopped by before our meeting to talk and meet and greet with some of them, good group, you have, it's kind of a mix of the Wake Forest Chamber, the Roseville Chamber, and the Franklin County Chamber, so it's free to join if you have a business, but they give meet and greets. They were there, it was a good event, looked like a pretty good turnout, looked like probably forty or fifty people. And then I departed early to make it to the meeting today.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Town Attorney, Ms. Katie Barber John.
Public Police Department.
Hand over to staff.
I'll turn it over to Chief Whitley for the first update.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, thanks, Tom. So this is the time of the year that the police department is wrapping up our annual reports for each division of the agency, so I have one, two present to you guys that should have been added to your agenda, it's my understanding, and that is the the report for ABC alcohol education funds expenditure, this would have been for two thousand and twenty-three. So part of the police department's mission to ensure public safety is education and awareness as it relates to alcohol and any variety of substance abuse, and we participate in a variety of outreach to the community and try to get into schools where we can, and just within the public forum, local businesses, you know, any opportunity we have for any source of substance abuse outreach. And as you already are aware, I'm sure a portion of the funds for Youngsville ABC Commission goes directly back to the police department. Now, as everyone within the police departments, you know, objective and responsibility to be part of these programs, but it falls directly under the purview of our corporal detective position, so a portion of that position is funded by Youngsville ABC Board, and then within that funding are also an amount of funds that go towards education and awareness specifically, so I'm going to talk about some of the things that we were involved in in two thousand and twenty-three. So we had some events that consisted of seventy-two hours of alcohol education and public safety activities. The first one took place during the Fall Festival Car Show at Faith Baptist Church on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We had four members of the agency in attendance, total hours were thirty-two hours, all told for that, about five hundred community members in attendance. And the second one was at Nova Enzymes, a health and safety fair in October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, we had two members of the department out there, and the total time spent was about ten hours, and there were three hundred community members in attendance. For both of those events, one of the things we do to kind of affect public engagement is we have a closed home course set up out there, and a, like an adult tricycle that anybody can get on, and we have goggles that simulate like a winner of eight or so of an impairment, so they can try their luck at getting on the tricycle and navigating the serpenting horse and stopping it appropriate places and following the officer's commands and things like that. And it's just a really fun event, because it's a safe way to simulate, especially for younger people, to, to get them on there and, you know, just see what a level of impairment looks like, and how dangerous operating a vehicle under those conditions and mental state of mind could be. And then following that event, all services are on hand, and typically, Tandy Cash, our administrative specialist, is out there, and she's very well-versed, having spent so much time with police officers and how to deliver this material, and we're able to have, you know, some really good, robust conversation, you know, about the dangers to public safety and health in general where it comes to substances, so it's just a fun way to, to get it out there and get folks engaged. So that was those two events, and then in October, on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, five members of the department, and I don't know how many dozens of officers and deputies from surrounding agencies, Bramble, Nash, State Highway Patrol, Department of Motor Vehicles was out there, Franklin County Sheriff's Department, and a number of local agencies participated in a boos-a-dilusive campaign. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services was out there, and what we sort of commonly refer to as their Batmobile, if you're familiar with this, it's a large bus that they put out there so they can test for an impairment or impaired substances and impaired drivers as they come through the checkpoints. You typically wouldn't think of that, you know, as an education component, but considering the amount of time it takes for, for motors to get through the checkpoint, we still have an opportunity to engage, and people are asking about, you know, how we're set up and how this thing is going to go, and, you know, how to proceed through the, through the event. So we're able to have some good dialogue with motors as they come through, obviously, from that public safety component, we're making sure we're giving impaired drivers off of the road, and then additionally, we have a public safety campaign on social media following that event, so we make sure that we're raising awareness for everybody that's flown in for Facebook and X taking drugs. Evidence that began with, so that was about a thirty-hour event with those officers and what's it, surrounding agencies. That's our ABC report, happy to entertain, any questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I have not been on the tricycle myself, but I've enjoyed watching some of my neighbors fit on them, so.
Yes, a big time, like I said, and it's a really good opportunity to kind of get folks engaged, thank you, this one. I will add, and I feel like I'd be a miss, considering the presentation that we had earlier about our local streets, and I promised to follow up with some of the commentary that we had the last meeting. So part of our patrol operations was a selective enforcement campaign headed up by now Sergeant Simpson, formerly Detective Purple Simpson, and that campaign selective enforcement operation focused on Carl Street, US One, Holden Road, surrounding streets. So for the month of June, and this isn't all told for the officers' efforts throughout the month, this is just one selective enforcement campaign. They issued ninety-eight charges for speeding, six charges for driving while licensed revoked, one for reckless driving, and then there was another criminal violation, not specified, and fifty-eight other just general traffic violations, all told, to give you an idea of types of effort that the officers did, there's just that singular, you know, I see.
So that was just since last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah, and I won't bore you with the, the rest of the specifics, but just outside that campaign, the officers totaled one hundred and sixty-four charges, just generally around town, you know, for, for public safety in general throughout the campaign.
All right. Thanks, Chief Whitley.
Absolutely, thank you for your time.
All right, we don't have a need to go into closed session, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's got a couple of quick items, the first of the, the, we are going to host a North Carolina League of Municipalities training in this room on August seventh, if any of you guys are interested in attending, I believe Commissioner Percy has indicated his interest. It is a council academy with fundamentals for elected officials, and then also a doubleheader, the second part being the rules of procedure, the legal basics basis for what a, what a meeting needs to look like and how it runs. I will be leaving from here and will be back in a week, I have the privilege of going on vacation for a week, I just wanted to leave you guys at the. I have the privilege of going on vacation for a week. I just wanted to leave you guys a heads up that I'll be out. Of course, the department heads can assist with whatever you need in the interim. We have a number of repaving projects that are going to kick off here shortly. East Franklin Street and Crawl Street are both being repaved. They will also do the culverts when they do that, because a number of those culverts are aged beyond repair and need to be ripped out and replaced. They'll be doing West Franklin Street and Anderson Park. The circle at the end of Anderson Park has also deteriorated significantly. It needs to be pulled out of the place. I received an email back from N C D O T about the signs that the board has tasked me with. And they said that a study would need to be initiated. I'm not sure why you need a study to look at pedestrian safety on Main Street, particularly one that we know has had some incidences. And all of us who have ever tried to cross that street, the driver behavior isn't what state law requires. So Commissioner Bray and I today signed an encroachment agreement that will mean that it is only waiting on one signature from N C D O T for us to go in and head and install the rapid flashing rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs at each of the six places where we have the signage now for the three crosswalks. I'll go sign for the three crosswalks. And then lastly, after asking for months and months, we received the next piece of the bypass plan. There was a quote that came in yesterday from our, the town's engineer for roughly three hundred thousand dollars to do the N I P A, the National Environmental Protection Agency's required documentation, as well as stormwater analysis and initial design for the portions from Fleming through Cedar Creek onto Tarboro Road. And with that document, if it was approved, it would then allow us to go and chase construction funding from federal grants which come to us through the locally administered project plan.
Planning project.
Planning project program through the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So it is my recommendation that we proceed with that. As you all are aware, we budgeted money for the next stage of the bypass. It is my recommendation that this be that one. The subsequent one would then be potentially the acquisition of the rest of the right-of-way. But if the board is interested in proceeding with that, I can issue the approval for that process to start. As I said, it's already budgeted. I just wanted to make sure that this was the right project for us to move towards on.
Do you need a motion for that?
Just to.
Okay.
Yeah, no, because we need to start moving for that lab funding.
Yeah.
That's important.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever we can do to.
I think you got your consensus.
All right. And.
Thank you.
Mayor Bo Tim Bray, that was on my head.
All right. Now, can move on. So we have no need to go into closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.